Okay, welcome everyone that's joined us here in council chambers this evening, as well as those that have joined us from home. This is a meeting of the Pecoson City Council for Monday, February 27th. If you could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right. And Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence, that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, our state, and our city. Guide and protect them, and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks everybody again for those that have joined us tonight. The first item on the true agenda is an audience for visitors. If there's anybody that would like to address council about any subject, now is that time.
Good evening. My wife Sandy and I wanted to come before city council and the gathered citizens of Pecoson to try and begin to convey our sense of gratitude to this city that has extended us during the days and weeks following the premature passing of our son Michael. We have never before lived in a community that so willingly wrapped its arms around us, extending their condolences, kindness, support, and sympathy during this dark period in our lives. We still continue to receive cards almost daily from friends and acquaintances of Michael's. Just to show you what this community means, I have written an excerpt from one of the cards we received. "We did not know Michael, and we do not know your family, but we felt the need to say how sorry we are for your loss. Our thanks go out to every citizen who donated to Michael's memorial fund, those who made financial contributions directly, indirectly, or who donated their spare change at 7-Eleven, all who brought us more food than we could eat, all who sent flowers, all who remembered us with sympathy and support cards, and all who are carrying us in their prayers." We have so many people to thank, but I wanted to take a moment to say a special thank you to the following groups. To the Pecoson City Public Schools and all of its personnel, from administrators, school staff at the primary, elementary, middle, and high schools, all of Michael's teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and friends, please be proud of the fact that you had as much influence on Michael as we did as his parents. When the opportunity came for us to be able to move Michael from York County School System to Pecoson City Schools, the choice was clear. We have known how good Pecoson schools are for a long time, as I graduated from Pecoson High School in 1978, and my mother taught in the school system for 19 years in various positions at all of the schools. Michael was like a diamond in the rough when he entered the school system in the second grade at the primary school. Each and every one of Michael's teachers made an impact on his life, and in some way, each helped contribute to his growth into the young man he became. To all of the students of the school system who helped Michael along the way, those who were his friends, those who sent handwritten condolence cards, those who signed his memorial banners, to those who wore pink the day after the tragic incident in his honor, to the boys' basketball teams for playing their games in his honor, as well as the moment of silence at the beginning of the game, and those who were able to attend his showing and celebration of life, know that we will never be able to say thank you enough time to sufficiently repay our gratitude for all of you watching out for Michael at school when his mother and I couldn't, and for not allowing him to become a target for bullying by other students, as often happens in other school systems. Michael always talked about his friends at school all of the time, but we never realized just how many friends and how much of an impact Michael had in the school system until this incident happened. Each and every one of you helped us polish that diamond into the beautiful gem he became. To Chief Bowen of the Pecoson Police Department and Chief Holloway of the Pecoson Fire Department, we want you to know that each of you run a first-class department, and wanted again to thank each and every member of the police and fire departments who were present on the day in question, and who rendered treatment to both myself and my son. Personnel from Station 1 attended to me, while personnel from Station 2 attended to Michael. We know that everything that could have been done was done to make the situation have a different outcome. Their professionalism is to the highest degree. We want to thank the police department for their generous donation of food during the days preceding Michael's celebration of life, and both the fire departments and police departments for their more than generous financial contribution. The food was delicious and greatly enjoyed and appreciated by friends and family members who had a chance to partake. To the Pecoson City Council, we want to say thank you for the beautiful flowers that were sent in Michael's memory. Thank you for the contributions made to Michael's memorial fund, and for the love and moral support extended to Sandy and I by both current and former city council members who came to Michael's viewing and funeral, as well as those who just stopped by our house to let us know we had not been forgotten. Pecoson would not be the type of community it is without the leadership displayed by the city council. To the employees of the city of Pecoson, from the city manager's office, the finance office, the treasurer's office, the city library, Parks and Recreation Department, Economic Development Authority, Public Works, Utilities Department, Fleet Maintenance, and any other department I may have forgotten to mention, thank to each and every one of you employees that came by our house to offer hugs, support, a shoulder to cry on, donated food, donated money, or sent flowers. Know that there will never be enough ways to say thank you and express our gratitude other than to be there for any other city employee who suffers a tragedy in their life. Employees of the city of Pecoson really are a family, and I'm proud to say I'm a member of that family. Finally, to all of the citizens, named or anonymous, who donated Michael's memorial fund, dropped their spare change into a collection jar at 7-Eleven, left donations at the funeral home, sent contributions directly to us, or raised money on Michael's behalf, we would again just like to say thank you so much for your generosity. Never before have we lived in a community that would do so much for two of its citizens. If that doesn't speak for the quality of life in Pecoson, nothing ever will. We are proud to say that we are citizens of Pecoson and would choose no other place to reside. Thank you for your time and support during this difficult period in our lives. We know that eventually we will be healed because of the love and support of the entire city of Pecoson. Thank you for your time.
Ron, Ron and Sandy, thank you all for coming here this evening. I can't imagine how difficult that was for you to read, but I can tell you it was all of our honor to come and see y'all. What a great family. Ron, we are so pleased to have you with us as one of our employees. We will continue to think about you in the days to come, and we wish you all the best.
And it helps us with the healing process to be coming forward to say thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For your time.
All right, anyone else?
I just want to give you my condolences, and I am glad that they feel supported by this community. I was, I'm Randy Tresh Trail, and I was present for the meeting, the EDA presentation for the property on Victory Boulevard, and I just have a request that any consideration of the property, what should be done with the property, that the community be consulted. And we talked about getting the property owners together, but I believe the community needs to have input into the process of what's going to be over there. And I think one of the ways that we do that is to revise the comprehensive plan. So I would like to see the comprehensive plan looked at and revised and done before we consider what's going to go over there. And that I would also request that there's plenty of communication, be it through social media or through the city, and I mean in addition to what's legally required. I think we're a small city, and I think we can use all channels of communication to let people know what's going on over there.
Good evening. My name's Janice Powell. I live at 306 Powhatan. I just wanted to offer my condolences to this family for your hurt and your pain. I didn't know your son, but my heart's breaking for you, so I'd be with you. I just wanted to again ask our city council, like I did along with many others quite some time ago, to please take into consideration before any other decisions are made or any future plans are pursued, that we really try to stick to our comprehensive plan and the update to our comprehensive plan before any further action is taken in any way, shape, or form on the Big Woods property on the north side of Victory Boulevard. And in particular, I would like to make a request, for what it's worth, that until such time as the market study is completed and the comprehensive plan is updated through the process that it's going through, that somehow the EDA be asked or potentially directed to put a halt on any potential development deals on that property until such time as we can all, as a community, come to a consensus of what we want to see on that beautiful gateway into our city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular meeting of February 13th through 2017.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, we approve the minutes of our regular meeting of February 13th. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item is new business, and we have the first item under new business, which is concurrent resolution amending the 1994 service agreement of the Middle Virginia Juvenile Detention Commission. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I have the honor to serve as your representative on the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission and its executive committee. Council members may recall, in early fall of last year, I brought forward, and you affirmatively acted on a recommendation to amend the agreement. This is very similar to that. It's sort of like we dealt with with the sign ordinance when we looked at a piece of it, and then we determined we needed to have a larger discussion. The larger discussion has been had. There are some technical amendments that are really non-substantive, in my view. The central portion of this change remains the same, which is to take us from a pay-as-you-go type of pundit formula for using a five-year average, which is a similar type of thing that we use for the jail, and particularly for a small locality, but really any. The difference between having one or two children in the detention center and having three that say for 90 days can interject substantial mid-year variables in your budget. This will protect us from that over time. The lows get smoothed out, but so do the highs, and it allows you to reasonably project in a budget, hopefully adopt that budget, and be able to count on that for the subsequent fiscal year. And it comes to you with my recommendation, and I would note about four or five of the several communities have already acted favorably on this.
Okay, very well. Is there a motion that we approve this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution, adopting a concurrent resolution of the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission and its member jurisdictions, amending the provisions of its December 1994 service agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, we approve the resolution for the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission. And questions or comments?
I'd just like to ask Randy, where is this specifically located?
It is located, if you're familiar where the adult detention center is, it's, if you take that little road that goes not right to the jail, but takes you to the side, to the left of the jail as you look at it, keep going, it's the next building behind it. But the commission meets in Saluda, and that is a hike.
That is, that is one of Randy's favorite trips.
Absolutely. They have a nice Hardee's. They have a nice Hardee's there.
That's why he said he was pleased to serve. So we appreciate your service, Randy, and we appreciate the fact that, number one, all kidding aside, we really appreciate the fact that, you know, things like this have come since you've, since you've joined that commission to level out costs for not just us, but really for everybody, to make it more consistent. So we appreciate your input into this, and bringing this to us, not just tonight, but previously. So we appreciate that. All right, we have a motion made, and seconded. Any other comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next item under new business is a resolution adopting the 2017 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Mr. Mayor, in a moment, I'll, I'll ask our deputy fire chief and emergency services coordinator, Michael Bryant, to come forward, but, well, let me do that. There's a short version of this, and I hope they'll give it to you, and if he misses, I'll reinforce it. Come on forward, Mike. Mike, as you know, is our point person among many people that help us in emergency services, emergency management, and emergency planning, and so he was, he made sure that our participation and integration in this regional plan was handled appropriately.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, I don't know how many people's had enough time to look at that document, but it's like 421 pages long.
I read every page.
Every page. Well...
You should have seen the amount of sticky notes he had.
Don't let the length of it worry you. I can assure you that in 2015, our plan was adopted by this body, and there were no changes in this update. It took a lot of work, it took a lot of time, it was about a two-year process for this, but we finally got it accomplished, and like I said, there were no changes to our plan, so everything is good with us. There were 22 communities involved with this process, so you can only imagine what that was. It was very easy for us, because like I said, we just, we just adopted our plan. It was fresh, so we just incorporated our existing plan into this update.
Okay, how often do y'all update this?
Every five years.
Every five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and if we could make a note for the next time that we update it, I'd like to see the U.S. Fish and Wildlife join this group.
Okay.
Since they have, or maybe they, we don't need them to have this group, but basically to join Pecoson in a discussion of fire prevention on Plum Tree Island, and how would we address that, and what type of actions would we like them to do to minimize damage to the city if something ever did occur out there.
Okay, sure will. We can include that.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion to proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the 2017 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, we adopt this update. Michael, thank you for your time and for your service in doing all this, and the other 22 things that you probably do for the city in your spare time.
Thank you very much.
And next time, if you'll ride to Saluda with the city manager, I would...
Would love to have you, Michael.
Give me a call, I'll be right there with you.
They got a nice Hardee's.
All right, any questions or comments on this? All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for the fiscal year 2017.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our finance director's here if you have a detailed question, but is normally the theme when we do these types of requests to you, there are four items this evening. The first is additional donations to the library in the amount of $10,400, donations to the police department for crime prevention, a police department burn grant for $1,555, and a true-up of the seafood festival budget. They brought in more money through sponsorships and other things that they do, so we're asking to appropriate that, and you can see, they, their expenditures often go up with their revenues, but they don't exceed their revenues, so we're talking about appropriating $7,150 in revenue against an additional expense of $5,750. And that is the entirety of it for this evening.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions? If not, somebody prepare to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
And have a question.
All right, which question?
Randy, you may have cleared it up for me. Reading this, does it say that the workboat race went $5,750 over their budget, or is this additional money collected that we adding back to them?
The $7,150 is a, is a, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I got that right. No, it's $5,750. Teresa, let me ask you to come, and, because I think I blurred two things. It was seafood festival revenue and expense that went up $7,150, and workboats that went up $5,750. I'm sorry, I blurred two things. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, say that, say that again, so that everybody in the public can hear.
There was additional revenue in the seafood festival of $5,150, and the workboat race was $5,750, and so that added to their expenditures, and neither one of them went over budget.
So both of those were, these are additional revenues?
Additional revenue.
That were later spent?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I apologize for that.
Very good. All right, do we have a motion? We do. Motion made and seconded. Any other questions? Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and now comments of the city manager.
Nothing this evening, sir.
All right, council directives, we'll start with you, Councilman Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank President Phil Tony and the entire Pecoson Kiwanis Club for their very generous donation of $700 to our public library. I'm sure those funds will be put to good use and are much appreciated. And also, I'd like to publicly state how thankful I am to live in a community such as this that was just ranked number one in safety and peacefulness so far as localities between 3,000 and 100,000 residents, and that status is based on statistics kept by the FBI. So thank you for the police department, the fire department, and all the citizens and employees that contribute to our success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Green?
Just like to remind everybody, tomorrow is Food Bank Day, and it'll be from 10:00 to 1:00 at the old city hall complex. The city staff is hosting at this time, and they always do a great job, and look forward to working with them. So tomorrow from 10:00 to 1:00, Food Bank.
I'm assuming that Randy and the assistant chief will be there?
I've never seen them show up. I can't speak for the assistant chief, but I dare to correct Councilman Green, I am normally there and will be there tomorrow.
I'll be there if you won't be today.
All right, back to the, back to the formality. Councilman Canelo?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Southall?
Yes, I'd like to second the comments made so far, and to tell you how proud I am to live in a city that treats their residents the way it was described by Michael's parents tonight, and my heart goes out to that family, and it's really great to work in a place in a city that treats their friends, families, and citizens the way they described.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Andrews?
I concur with those comments. That's the reason that my family still lives in the city, even though my kids have grown up and left me, and my extended family doesn't live in the area, but that's why I'm here, because of, of the city that this is. So, you know, it's a, it's a great place and a different place, and you don't really understand that unless you live here and get to take a part of that. Also, I wanted to just thank the EDA study group, they did great work, and would encourage citizens watching to go back and watch that if you didn't, and feel free to email me, and I assume any of the other council members, if, you know, you have questions or comments about that, because, you know, I do think citizen input is important when we're talking about the most, probably the most important piece of real estate that this city owns. So I would encourage people to, to do that, and also contact the comprehensive plan team, because I know they're still looking for citizen input into the comprehensive plan as well.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing.
And I don't have anything either. I think enough has been said this evening, and I appreciate everybody's time. We'll tell you that we do have a closed session tonight, and that closed session is pursuant to Section 2.237-11A7 to discuss legal advice by such council, and this is on a deed of trust note. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, that we proceed into closed session.
Judy, please.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very well, and we are in closed session then. Okay, I see that we're back on the air. I'll ask, we're back from closed session, and I'll ask for a motion that we certify that closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session, and that we talk about only what we convened the closed session to talk about.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, motion made, and seconded, that we certify the closed session. Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very well, and a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Didn't have to ask for that one. All right, so Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very well, and we are adjourned.[1781.53] Very well, and we are adjourned.